Okay, see an anxious crowd, so we're gonna get started. Say goodnight to everybody, this is meeting number eight, it has now been officially called to order. This is April 16th, 2018, it is 5:30 PM, we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can we do rule call?
McCamell.
Here.
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Phillips.
Here.
Graham Murray.
Here.
Who did that?
You want me to get that for ya?
So if your ringers are on, now's a good time to turn 'em off. It's usually me that it happens to before I say that. Okay, tonight, we have a busy schedule, so we're gonna try to roll downhill. First of all, we have a statewide Iowa winner of the If I Were Mayor essay contest. Thank goodness, she's still gonna let me finish out my year and seven months, but she did a fantastic job, and we're just so, we're excited to be recognizing Gabriella Derry. Whereas the Iowa League of Cities essay contest entitled If I Were Mayor was open to seventh grade students across the state of Iowa. The contest asked students what they would do if given the opportunity to serve as mayor of their city. And whereas essays were judged based on creativity, clarity, sincerity of thought, and proper use of grammar. And whereas one statewide winner was selected from nearly 900 essays submitted from across the state. And whereas Gabriella Derry, a seventh grade student at Notre Dame Middle School in Burlington, was selected as the Iowa statewide winner. Announcement of Gabriella as winner was announced by Governor Kim Reynolds and Lieutenant Governor Adam Gregg at the State Capitol Building on March 28th, 2018. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Burlington do hereby proclaim Gabriella Derry as the statewide Iowa winner of the If I Were Mayor essay contest, and applaud her for this grand achievement. Sign and seal. There you go. I should've brought her essay and reread it to you again, it was phenomenal. Sign and seal, this 16th day of April, 2018. Shane A. McCamell, Mayor. But, on top of this, well, let me have, we have Mark Toome here from the League of Cities, and he also has something to present to you, and then we'll do the final presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I am Mark Toome, I'm the Director of Membership Services with the Iowa League of Cities, and we hold this yearly contest, and it had nearly 900 essays were submitted across the state. We divided the state and award winners on the four congressional districts. And then, your locally, Gabriella was our statewide winner, and with that receives a $500 scholarship. This plaque, which unfortunately does say March 28th, that was the date, it was presented at the State Capitol, so appreciate that. And we also wanna recognize the sponsor of this, Snyder and Associates, so we appreciate their generosity in supporting this contest, and they have done that for several years. Mayor Reynolds, or excuse me, Governor Reynolds had, you know, heard that you were sick and was unable to join, and she appreciated not getting sick, but she recognized your accomplishment, and we really appreciate your essay, so thank you very much.
Okay, I would like to present you with this proclamation, and we would also like to present you with your own. Yeah. On behalf of the City of Burlington, thank you for not taking my job. We'd like to present you with this, can we get a, can we get a better?
Thank you.
This is for you, would you like to have a word, please?
I am so surprised that I found out, and I'm so excited to have one.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you, Mark, for coming down. And Gabriella, again, good job, one out of 900 people. You're a winner, my friend, you're a winner. Okay, next, we have Day of Prayer.
Your Honor, I have a proclamation. Proclamation reads, whereas the National Day of Prayer is a tradition first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas in 1988, legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May each year as the National Day of Prayer was adopted. And whereas Congress has declared Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, as the 67th consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer, and whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing this day in Burlington, Iowa, when all make knowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 3rd, 2018, as a Day of Prayer. In Burlington, in Burlington, Iowa, and we urge the citizens of Burlington, Iowa, to observe this day as in ways appropriate to its importance and its significance. Signed and sealed this day, the 16th of April, 2018.
Sam Pratt, come on down.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, it's that time of year, National Day of Prayer, we gather, this year's gonna be at the West Burlington United Methodist Church, moved it to West Burlington this year, and that day will be, churches will be gathered together at 6:30 in the evening on May 3rd, the first Thursday, and we will be praying for our nation, our country. Our local official will be praying for you, praying for our city, for the economics, our schools, our police officers, our firefighters, will be praying as a church that day. So, I would invite any one of you who would like to come that night to at least read the proclamation, I would invite, and if you wanna leave right after you read it, and if you're busy, that's fine, but if we can just get one person to read it, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
May 3rd.
What church?
West Burlington United Methodist, right across from the fire station.
May 1st.
On Broadway.
3rd.
May 3rd.
That's what I said, May 3rd.
Yeah.
After I said May 1st.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your recognition.
Sam, thank you, and we appreciate that, we do. Okay, teach children to save.
Your Honor, I have a proclamation I'm very excited about. This proclamation reads, whereas the American Bankers Association's Education Foundation established the National Teach Children to Save Day to spotlight the importance of teaching our nation's youth about saving money. They have set aside April 20th, 2018, for bankers across America to teach young people about how money works and how to spend it wisely. And whereas, according to the US Department of Commerce, our small, low national savings rate rivals the rates during the Great Depression. And whereas the current economy, rising number of America's personal bankruptcies, especially with young adults under, at the age of 25, college students graduating with increasing student debt, the increase in consumer credit card debt, and the lack of school personal finance classes, and the lack of inadequate retirement savings emphasizes the importance of introducing children to the concept of saving money as a first step to their healthy financial future. And whereas recognizing that young Iowans are our leaders of tomorrow, bankers and the Iowa Bankers Association are taking a stand to combat financial illiteracy. There, now, we the City Council of Burlington, Iowa, here do by proclaim April 20th, 2018, as Teach Children to Save Day. Good saving habits start early, we know this, and healthy money skills last a lifetime. Signed and sealed this 16th day of April, 2018.
She's coming down for that. Okay.
Come on down.
There you go.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Schuster, I am F&amp;M's Financial Literacy Coordinator. I'm here today representing F&amp;M Bank and Trust's Financial Literacy Programs, specifically F&amp;M Kids Bank and F&amp;M Teen Bank. We have nine led, or student-led schools, banks in Burlington. They include North Hill, Sunnyside, Grimes, Great River Christian, Blackhawk, Course, Notre Dame Elementary, Aldo Leopold, Edward Stone, and Notre Dame Middle and High School. We have a total of 161 student employees in the Burlington schools. Students in kindergarten through 12th grade may have a savings account that earns them 4.5% interest. This year is a special year for us, we are celebrating our 20th year with F&amp;M Kids Banks. Our first bank was at North Hill Elementary. In addition to the school banks, F&amp;M delivers financial presentations in classrooms and during the after-school programs at several of our, several school locations. Our program was designed to encourage students to save for their future, to teach them basic financial skills, so that they can use those skills to become productive citizens. We want to teach students that regardless of what their future holds, each one of them will need to know how to manage money. Today, I have some students who are here to speak on their school bank's behalf.
All right.
And I'd like to start with Blackhawk. Audrey.
Hello, I'm Audrey Work, and I'm here to represent F&amp;M Kids Bank at Blackhawk Elementary. At Blackhawk, we have a total of 121 student accounts, with a total of $46,687.18 in the accounts. We also have 25 student educator accounts. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of F&amp;M Kids Bank at Blackhawk.
William, at Grimes.
Hello, I am William Steamer, and I'm here to represent F&amp;M Kids Bank at Grimes Elementary. At Grimes, we have a total of 80 student accounts, with a total of $7,591.05 in the accounts, or, yeah, in the accounts. We also have 12 educator accounts. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of F&amp;M Kids Bank at Grimes.
All right, Course, at Catherine.
Can you put them right here, well?
There you go, Catherine.
Hello, I am Catherine Taylor, and I am here to represent F&amp;M Kids Bank at Course Elementary. At Course, we have a total of 63 student accounts, with a total of $29,045.69 in the accounts. And we also have 15 educator accounts. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of F&amp;M Kids Bank at Course.
Abby, Great River Christian.
Hello, I'm Abby Boyer, and I'm here to represent F&amp;M Kids Bank at Great River Christian. At Great River Christian, we have a total of 51 student accounts, with a total of $24,493.25 in the accounts. We also have 11 educator accounts. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of F&amp;M Kids Bank at Great River Christian.
North Hill, Nadia Jones.
You look like a girl I know.
Hello, I am Nadia Jones, and I am here to represent F&amp;M Kids Bank at North Hill. At North Hill, we have a total of 70 student accounts, with a total of $11,253.76 in this account. We also have 14 educator accounts. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of F&amp;M Kids Bank at North Hill.
Connor Gerhart, from Notre Dame Elementary.
Hello, I am Carter Gerhart, and I am here to represent F&amp;M Kids Bank at Notre Dame Elementary. At Notre Dame, we have a total of 106 student accounts, with a total of $62,431.36 in the accounts. We also have 15 educator accounts. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of F&amp;M Kids Bank at Notre Dame.
Kayden Craig, for Sunnyside.
Hello, I'm Kayden Craig, and I'm here to represent F&amp;M Kids Bank for Sunnyside Elementary. At Sunnyside, we have a total of 107 student accounts, with a total of $22,662.61 in the accounts. We also have 19 educator accounts. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you on behalf of F&amp;M Kids Bank at Sunnyside.
And now I have Amaya Warfield, she's gonna speak on behalf of all of the teen banks that we have here locally. Several of our teens were at soccer practice and games and different things this evening, so she's gonna represent.
Hello, I'm Amaya Warfield, I am an eighth grade student at Aldo Leopold, I'm here to represent F&amp;M Teen Bank. At Aldo, we have 112 student accounts, with a total of $54,804.06 in all of the accounts. We have 10 educator accounts. At Edward Stone, we have 133 student accounts, with a total of $93,705.15 in the accounts, and we have six educator accounts. At Burlington Community High School, we have 64 student accounts, with a total of $39,426.96 in the accounts. At Notre Dame Middle School and High School, we have 128 student accounts, with a total of $218,47.97 in the accounts, and we have seven educator accounts. Total saved in F&amp;M Kids Bank and F&amp;M Teen Bank accounts is $591,858.52. Total saved in educator accounts is $490,469.52. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of F&amp;M's educational accounts.
And that is, thank you for allowing us to speak today.
You know, if we put those two together, we could fix Cascade Bread. Let's get those kids up here, let's get a picture with all those kids. You guys are winners, come on up. Come on, guys. Wow. Group photo? How are you doing? Congratulations. That's your mom. Come on, Peanut Butter. Let's crunch on in, come on Peanut Butter, come on over here. Everybody good? Hightower's good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, you did a good job. Thank you very much. Put all that together, that's about it. Yeah, hey, you guys, don't forget, run for City Council when you grow up. Burlington needs ya. That's right. That was awesome. All right. Carry on down the line. Let's go right on down the line.
Your Honor, I have a proclamation, whereas the Burlington City Council and the Keep Burlington Beautiful Committee wishes to protect and preserve the land, water, air, and other natural resources for future generations, and whereas the Burlington City Council and the Keep Burlington Beautiful Committee wish to observe the 18th Local Earth Day Anniversary, and whereas the Keep Burlington Beautiful event supports and strengthens the goals in environmental sustainability, and helps to keep the City of Burlington and Des Moines County clean and vibrant through the cleanup activities, and now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby acknowledge Saturday, April 21st, 2018, as Earth Day, 2018, in the City of Burlington, Iowa, and invite all city residents to attend activities and participate in the Keep Burlington Beautiful Citywide Cleanup on that day. Signed and sealed this 16th day of April, 2018.
Mr. Tisland?
For you, sir.
There you go. Please have a word, Mr. Tisland.
Thank you for the proclamation with respect to our Keep Burlington Beautiful Committee. We have a lot of individuals that put a lot of time and effort into this, but I encourage everyone to come down Saturday, April 21st, at the Port of Burlington, starting at 8:30 for registration. We send individuals and families and groups out to clean up areas of the community that need it. Sometimes we find new areas, oftentimes it's the same areas, but we try every year to clean that up. We have free lunch afterwards from 11:00 to 12:30 with door prizes, music, and a group photo. We do have Earth Day t-shirts for sale that help support the program, encourage everyone to come out. We are having a tree planting demonstration on Jefferson Street between Front and Main this year as well, at 12:30 after the event. Can see how to properly plant a tree with our forestry department as well, and we have water bottles from Great River Health System and Des Moines County Area Recyclers for those that attend as well, so come on out and help keep Burlington beautiful.
Do you know what the menu is for lunch, Mr. Tisland?
Hot dogs, apples, bananas, and Girl Scout cookies.
Just wanted to get a confirmation on that.
Had me a cookie, just needed a serving.
Yes, I'll just be needing a serving. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have six resolutions. The first is a resolution approving demolition nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Piper Jaffrey and Company to serve as a dissemination agent for secondary market disclosure. The third is a resolution proposing federal highway administration, federal functional classification changes for roadways as described within the cities of Burlington and West Burlington, Iowa. The fourth is a resolution of support for a workforce housing tax incentive program project by Kelly Hole. The fifth is a resolution of support for a workforce housing tax incentive project, or program, project by Burlington Crossing Real Estate LLC. And the sixth is a resolution approving easement agreements with Burlington Truck Rail Inc. along Bluff Road for access to properties. And we have a hearing set for May 7th, consideration of an ordinance creating Chapter 163A Junk Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa. And we have one appointment, that is Bob Francis, to the Flint Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, and we appreciate you, Bob Francis, for your service. Are there any of these items that anybody would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Yes, sir. One of my favorite Burlingtonians. Anyway, Leon Chehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street, I'd like to, under resolutions, remove number four and number five. Never fail ya. You never do. Anybody else? I see none. Okay, Mr. Rinker?
I have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1 consent agenda, except for number four and number five.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
McCamell.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay, resolution.
Do we roll to four or five, or do you wanna go straight on to chief?
Chief.
Okay. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the appointment of, I proudly have a resolution approving the appointment of Chief of Police, whereas on March 20th, 2018...
Let me go second first.
Second. Okay. Continue on this. Whereas on March 20th, 2018, the Civil Service Commission submitted a chief's civil service eligibility list, and whereas on April 3rd, 2018, Jim Furnell, the city manager, offered Dennis Kramer, the position of Chief of Burlington, Iowa Police Department. Now therefore, be it resolved that the appointment of Dennis Kramer as Chief of Police of the Burlington, Iowa Police Department is hereby approved, approved and adopted this 16th day of April, 2018.
Mr. Furnell?
We went through a fairly extensive process, as the summary statement there kinda talks about the key steps. We had several internal candidates, and as well as some external. Would have to say that we had very, very good candidates that were part of that pool that made it a tough, difficult decision-making process. But I am proud to be able to have Major Kramer be in the position to be Chief Kramer, subject to your approval here tonight.
Comments from the audience? Is there one? I see none. Counsel, comments? Let's get it done. Great choice. Chief! All right, let's do this. Kathleen.
McCamell.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, chief.
You gonna do the good stuff?
I pray to my Father and to His Son. I, Saint Joseph Man.
Aye, Dennis Kramer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The office of police officer, I'm sorry, police chief.
The office of police chief.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Chief, can I have a word?
I will.
All right.
I might've wrote something down.
That was dice.
I was told to always be prepared, so, Mr. Mayor, Counsel, and Staff, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my wife, Tammy, for all your love, support, care, and understanding over the last 30 years of service as a police officer's wife. They told her it wouldn't be easy to be married to a police officer, but she makes it look easy even when it's most difficult. Thank you to my daughter Kirsten and her husband, Air Force Captain Anthony Navaroli, and my daughter Miranda, for living up to the high expectations of being a cop's kid and their support, even when they were little, and gave me the hand-drawn pictures, which I still have. Thanks to my mom, and my mother-in-law, who are in the audience, for all the support and the valuable advice over the years. And thank you to all those throughout this community that have supported me over the years, and most recently with the kind words about being selected as your Chief of Police. I am honored to serve as the Chief of Police of our community, its citizens, and outstanding men and women that serve beside me every day to get the job done in making Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you very much, and if I'd like to take a minute, I'd like to have my wife pin my badge on me.
Absolutely. Thank you. Everybody's gonna start asking you where you found your wife.
to live, work, and play. Thank you very much. And if I'd like to take a minute, I'd like to have my wife pin my badge on me.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Everybody's gonna start asking you where you found your wife.
Do you have a full battery?
Our new Chief of Police, Dennis Kramer.
I had it pointed out to me a couple of times.
Did you? Imagine that. Bishop is in the house. How you doing, Bishop? Good to see you.
Good in there.
Okay. Okay, from here, we want to roll downhill, so we're gonna ask for your cooperation. Next, we have consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand eighteen Seal Street Program. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Mr. McGregor?
That was bad timing following him.
Yeah.
Something good with-
Pressure's on.
Road.
Give us something good.
Eric's gonna throw up a PowerPoint here. Borrowed Jesse's from last week. So these are the plans and specs on the two thousand eighteen Seal Coat Project. As you can see off to the right, it includes numerous different streets that we'll try and do this year with the Seal Coat Program. We did a little bit of switching around from our normal process because of the sewer separation and the area that that's gonna affect. If you bump to the next slide for me. The budgeted cost for this is three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. We have an engineer's estimate, including engineering fees that is underneath that, so in case we run into any issues along the way, we can try and take care of it. Assuming approval tonight, we'll go out to bid, receive bids back on May eighth, and then award May twenty-second, and then start sometime in early June.
Sounds good. Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Nick, we'll have an update on what those bids come back in, and then in June.
You'll receive bids back on May eighth.
Okay.
And so you'll see it in your packet for the work session on May fifteenth.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Question.
You have a motion to close?
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the two thousand eighteen Seal Coat Street Program.
Second?
Second.
Let's take it to vote. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Absolutely.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand eighteen HMA overlay project. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Mr. McGregor?
This is the plans and specs for the two thousand eighteen HMA project. If you bump up to the next couple of slides. As you can see here, on the right-hand side is a map. It's a snippet from our five-year road plan. For two thousand eighteen, the yellow is the roads that will be working. The major asphalt project would be Flint Hills Drive that turns into Shields, and then Gertrude and Groton. If you'd hit the next slide, I could talk a little bit about the money. We had budgeted six hundred and nine thousand dollars in asphalt work. Typically, what we do, this is geo-bond revenue, about one point four million dollars. We had planned, in the five-year road plan, to do some concrete work as a part of that. We still plan to do some concrete work, but with the way that Agency Street was bid out and some of the other projects, we wanted to keep a little bit in reserve to cover some of those expanded costs. So six hundred and nine thousand was the budgeted. We're expected at five hundred and ten thousand. We've heard some good news about asphalt, and we're also bidding it in a climate where we're also going out to bid with Mount Pleasant Street, hoping to get better numbers. So we, should we be under bid by enough, we will try and add on, do a change order to add on some more asphalt streets that are in the relative area of the project that we're talking about now. So we have the ability to do that, and we'll probably change order to add on some extra roads. And we had a conversation last week about packaging the Seal Coat and asphalt together. There are similar type contractors that do that work. We've had pretty relative good prices with Seal Coat work. Asphalt has not been as competitive. We're not gonna package them together per se, but we will bid them simultaneously. Our best hope is that Mount Pleasant Street will be let in June, and contractors will know that. And that's about a million and a half dollar project, along with a six hundred thousand dollar job. So that's kind of our hope with the competitiveness for asphalt bidding.
Okay.
And the timeline is the same. Sorry to interrupt. May eighth, pack it for your work session on the fifteenth, and then approval on the twenty-second.
Perfect. Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Any questions or concerns, anybody from the audience? I see none. Counsel, are we good?
Good.
Good?
Your Honor, I move that the hearing regarding the consideration of plans and specifications for the two thousand eighteen HMA overlay project be closed. I'll second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand eighteen HMA overlay project. Second?
Moved in second. Let's vote. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Yes.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Well done. Number three, consideration of an application for a housing sustainability grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program. And there you go.
My name's Sarah K. Cox with the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, and we've been working with the city staff on identifying a targeted neighborhood and some qualified homeowners to apply for a housing sustainability grant. This will be funded through the Community Development Block Grant through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. The grant is due Friday, May fourth of two thousand and eighteen. The city of Burlington will request two hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars. This is to rehab six homes in the targeted neighborhood. That amount is for construction costs, technical services, lead costs for the grant, temporary relocation if we would need to use that, and then admin for the grant. There's no local match needed from the city, and the homeowners would have to be below eighty percent of the median income for Des Moines County. So to give you an example, we just got two thousand eighteen income limits. A family of one would have to make below thirty-eight thousand a year, and a household of four would have to make below fifty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year to qualify for the grant. The targeted neighborhood that's been identified is south, goes from Flora, Jodstown to Iowa, up to Coors, and then the eastbound would be Osborne Street to Lincoln. So we've already identified four homeowners within that targeted neighborhood. We would like to come up with two more to submit with a grant to show readiness. We think that would help the grant get funded. So we tried to not have to displace the homeowners that are receiving assistance. Usually, the work can get done during the day, and then they can get back into the house. If they would have to be displaced, there is grant funds that would cover displacement for the family, would cover hotel and meal expenses for them. Usually, that's due to lead work that has to be done. And then the nature of the grant would be items such as if they need a new roof, siding, insulation, windows, floor coverings, furnace, plumbing, electrical upgrades, stuff like that.
It's a maximum of twenty-four nine ninety-nine actual construction hard cost.
Yep. The max they can receive for actual construction cost is twenty-four thousand nine ninety-nine.
How do you, how will you go about identifying the other two homeowners?
City staff was gonna go do surveys for, through the neighborhood and see if anybody was income-qualified. That's the first step, to see if they're below the income qualifications. Some of the homes, I don't know if they're nuisance properties, have been identified through city staff that they would like to get those taken care of.
We did some resident surveys last week, staff did, and there's about thirty, just through that initial phase, that would qualify based on their reporting of income and household size.
Will the homeowner kind of decide what work they want to have done, or are there guidelines?
There are guidelines, but we can work with the homeowner on certain things. The grant doesn't cover, like if they would want air conditioning, if they'd have it, it would replace it, but it wouldn't install like air conditioning, or if they want in addition build on their house or something. But they're definitely, you know, they're there when the inspector's there and showing them around and stuff.
Okay.
There's some things that we have, we have to address lead. We're now required to test for radon. So there's certain things that we, that we have to do with the grant funds.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel, we're good?
Your Honor, I move that the hearing regarding the consideration of application for a housing sustainability grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program be closed.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the application for a housing sustainability grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program. Second?
Moved in second. Thank you, sir. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Well done. Number four, consideration of an ordinance amending chapter one sixty-three Environmental nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
So for the past few months, we've had a review of our current nuisance code at a staff level, as well as with our attorneys, to see if any updates or changes need to be made to ensure we're following proper standards and laws, as well as allow for more timely ability to address some typical nuisance issues, such as trash, junk, and tall grass. So the code updates include updates and clarification for a few of the definitions of what are nuisance under one sixty-three point oh-three. So there's some language added under those sections. Number fourteen under that section is an update of what qualifies as tall grass and weeds, depending on location. Number fifteen is removed in relation to nuisance vehicles. This is being brought back as its own section. It's on a set date for hearing, chapter one sixty-three A, junk vehicles. So that'll be at the following council meeting. The new fifteen relates to illegally parked vehicles per the zoning code. It's not necessarily junk vehicles, but vehicles that are parked on grass or in front yards illegally. This has been an issue in the past few years, and the typical remedy is through municipal infraction. That takes generally a couple of months to even have it begin to be addressed, so this would speed up that process to at least be able to address those in a more timely manner. Many of the sections are clarifications based on our attorney's recommendation for language in the code and the consistency to state code and case law language. We had language on these items in our code, but this updates the language to ensure it's enforceability and follows proper standards and is defensible if challenged. So there's some sections, right of entry, warrants, nuisance abatements, nuisance notice contents, method of service, failure to abate, emergency abatement. Those are all kind of revamping what was existing and making sure we're following the proper language. And a lot of that is our attorney just making sure the language in there covers off if challenged and that we're doing things properly. So it's not a, those aren't real big changes, they're just modifications to the language based on our attorney's recommendation. Section one sixty-three eleven, request for hearing. We do provide this notice in our letters and postings, but did not have that language or process spelled out in our code. So that's just a standard due process for residents that have a nuisance process. So that we already do, but it just wasn't spelled out in code. Section one sixty-three seventeen, penalties allows for operation. The option of suspending a current permit of property continues to maintain a nuisance property. And then section one sixty-three point one oh, notice by publication. This section and others better clarifies what method of notice is required for nuisance. Our current code has some ambiguous language regarding notice by personal delivery or certified letter, and also allows for posting in a conspicuous place on premise, which we usually always do now. So currently, under our code, the typical method is posting a property with a placard on the front door, conspicuous place to a resident. Some of the language talks about personal delivery or certified letter, and we wanted to clarify what we're doing is how we should be doing it, and that's kind of the update that our attorney did. But this section also allows the city to better enforce small grass and junk items in a timely manner, while still posting the property with a placard, as we typically do. This would allow posting in the newspaper one time each year stating tall grass and weeds, small junk and trash. That posting in the note, in the newspaper is the notice, but we're still gonna placard, as it states in the code, with the orange placard, as we do now. So it's not a real big change over how we operationally do things now. It's just making sure how we do things is enforceable and correct by our code. So it takes out that ambiguity of where it states we should post if there's reasonable notice hasn't been given, or if we try to reach someone at the home and they're not there, is that ability to post, and that language in our current code is just not the most clear for staff or residents. We are diligent in attempting to make sure that only junk refuse and inoperable equipment that are not stored properly are removed. We do try and avoid any usable items that are in good repair and stored properly from being removed. This is primarily set up to enforce the trash, the clear junk, spread debris and tall grass. It's not intended to address some of these large nuisance properties that we're gonna probably deal with over a couple of weeks or a few month process, where we want to notify the, or speak to the actual owner and go through the items on a, in a more diligent basis. It's more the trash and debris and junk that is clear and evident. So I know there's concerns about us going on property and just taking items, and we're not gonna do that. We're still gonna post, as we have in the past. We're still gonna be diligent about not taking items that we suspect may have use or value. If they are considered a nuisance, we'd want to have that discussion with the owner of, are you using this? And if so, it needs to be stored properly or kept in a good condition, not just spread about the yard.
Can you confirm that you guys will not be going in people's homes?
Yeah, this does not allow us to go in individuals' homes. That would, we'd have to get a warrant to go in an actual property, into a property.
What is that right of entry for inspection?
That's going on a property, I guess going on to the property, if we see nuisances, to verify what the nuisances are on the property, if it's clearly visible from the public right of way.
Eric, if something is taken from a home and the property owner claims that that was something that was a material that was being kept adequately or was in good condition, does that material go directly to the dump? Or do we have, does it go to an abatement location where it's held for a certain amount of time? Or what's the steps there for that material?
Typically, we only take trash and junk, but they would have a right to a hearing or appeal. Generally, it's taken right to a landfill. It's not items that we want captured, salvaged, if it's junk or debris like that.
Okay, and if they do appeal it and they win that appeal, what's the indemnification process? process? Or what, how does that, how are they indemnified for that?
I guess the typical appeal in the past has been whether it's a nuisance or not, and then whether they should have to pay a fee if it's determined not to be a nuisance. Not having, not charging someone for taking trash or debris if they feel it wasn't trash or debris would probably be the remedy there. What items are taken to the landfill directly? If there are vehicles that are hauled off properties, those are taken by a tow company, they'd have a right to get them there, but generally the items that we take are junk or debris that is taken to a landfill.
Just let me clarify. This is pretty similar to, to what we already were doing. It just seems like it was a little bit loose and we're tightening it up in the verbiage. So, is, would that be a correct assessment?
Correct. The main change is, I guess, we're still gonna be posting properties as we typically do now on the majority of cases. It's, is the language in our code supporting that, or is it ambiguous that we should be said, having personal delivery or certified mail or a posting on the property? And clarifying that this allows posting on the property and notice in the newspaper. There's kind of that question of when is one method of service required over another? And typically, we've done the posting in the past for most all nuisances, and that's what we'll continue to do, but it's just by our attorney's recommendation, this follows, allows us to, by what we're doing, it's actually following the letter of the code.
So, Eric, what would be the timeframe? So, you make every attempt to, to reach a resident, you do a posting. How long is that posting allowed before you start to?
Generally, it's forty-eight hours is the minimum, unless it's an emergency abatement where trash is just flying over the neighborhood.
Yeah, catch on fire, that kind of thing.
But in the code, it states forty-eight hours is our typical notice minimum. A lot of times, it's longer than that.
But I do want to mention, though, that if, there has been in the past where people have been given notice and they called down here and staff worked with them to get, give them extra time if it was bigger or something like that. So, also, you know, if there was, you know, if there's a death in the family, or if you're in the hospital or something like that, phone call to staff, staff will work with you on that. But we all know what this is about. This is about trying to get some of these nuisances, nuisance straightened up, and it's, it's hard on the neighborhood. It really is. So, everybody shouldn't have to pay for that. Everybody needs to, to play nice. Any other counsel? Let's see, are there any comments? Anybody in the audience? Yes, sir?
Yes. Tom Kuntz, 602 Etna, which is located across the street from the northeast corner of South Hill Park. Before I, I wrote this up after last Monday's work session, but there's two things in this thing, I just got it this morning and read it, and it says "may notify." That concerns me. It show me, it should be "shall notify." I feel citizens deserve the right to know when you're gonna come on the property. And, so, I'm gonna read what I wrote because I'm not that good of a public speaker, and I would really like to get this information out to you and have you consider it. Like I said, I'm Tom Kuntz. I live at 602 Etna Street, which is located across the street from North Hill, northeast corner of South Hill Park. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council, for being open to listening to other views and to allowing us to reason together. I have three points, and I hope to convince you to vote no on changing this until it's amended and require at the minimum that a non-registered letter be mailed out to the taxpayer. Number one, on the surface, this change sounds fine. Who can be against picking up offensive garbage and trash? By changing the ordinance, you enable the city staff not, to not have to communicate with taxpayers. The way I read this, if you posted in the paper on January 2nd, come January, fourteen days later, you can just go pick up trash or whatever you want to that you feel is offensive. But let me continue. By changing the ordinance, you enable the city council to not have to communicate with the taxpayer. In the past, I have served two and a half elected terms on the Des Moines County Extension Council, Iowa State University Extension and Outreach. During that ten years, I was honored to serve in the following positions, Treasurer Chairman and Vice Chairman. Extension staff always welcomed the opportunity to meet the public as if to be able to inform and educate. The Extension Council and Iowa State University would not have tolerated staff that would not be helpful or come across as jaded bureaucrats. By voting no, you allow your staff to develop better interpersonal skills and become better able to individually educate the taxpayer public. Your interest in long-term compliance and compassionate education and goodwill will be certified by voting no to changing the ordinance unless it's amended. Number two, at the council's work session Monday, last Monday, I witnessed the staffer's comments and undermined the truthful statements that I had previously made to council members. The head of the Department of State and the Nuisance Department never takes anything of value. They replace valuable items next to the taxpayer's home rather than taking them. I, I think this man was, is sorely misinformed of what his higher leagues do. His statement sounded reassuring, but it's exactly the opposite of what I and my wife witnessed last May 18th. On this day, I stepped out my front porch to sit on my porch swing and enjoy the views of downtown and the river. I looked down and noticed an unmarked truck and an unmarked trailer, which was two-thirds to three-quarters full of metal items on my neighbor's house. I observed three men taking his property. They reminded me of three children in a candy store with no adult supervision. I went back into my house and grabbed my camera and slapped on the 300 millimeter lens. I wanted to get documentation for my neighbor who hadn't, I hadn't seen for a couple of weeks. My wife came out to the porch, and after observing what they had taken, stated they are taking valuable property. I'm going to call police. I asked her to call the Nuisance Department first to make sure they were not behind the appropriation of the neighbor's property. She called and got the answer machine. I personally witnessed the men taking an approximately forty-foot extension ladder, an approximately fourteen-foot step ladder, a working lawnmower that I had heard my neighbor used two, three times already that spring, his gas can and lawn chair. Because I was taking photographs through leafed-out limbs, I proceeded to the park to obtain better photographic evidence. When they saw me in my camera, they hurried into the truck and stopped in the middle of the street so the passenger could just get out and start running halfway up the park to confront me. As he was running and demanding why I was taking photos, he must have seen my wife with her cellphone at the north end of the park. He turned around and left. The Burlington Nuisance Officer called us back later that afternoon. The first impression I got that he was stressed and was not friendly. I asked if the Nuisance Department had been to 232 South Sixth Street, and he answered affirmative. I informed him his contractors had taken what I considered a couple of expensive ladders. He informed me that he had checked the property and told the man to take everything. When I checked with Bernard's website a couple of days ago, I learned to replace those ladders would cost $1,250. My neighbor is not a rich man. I hope the council can appreciate that we aren't talking about trash here. When I saw my neighbor a week later in the park, informed him of what I had witnessed and offered him copies of my photos, he told me his antique bicycles, which he had been restoring for his five-year-old kids, were taken. And he almost broke down in tears when he talked about the new Japanese water statue that he just purchased was taken. Why he didn't seek legal address is possibly because he'd been bullied so many times. He suffers from mental illness, and he just gave up. In fact, I heard that he moved back east to be with his relatives. Now, this taxpayer, over three decades, weighs five law-abiding children in that house. Six months ago, someone convinced his ex-wife to sell his property with a river view to the City of Burlington for $1,000, plus assessed charges of $1,900, resulting from last summer's charges to the city. In my opinion, that was legalized theft. Now, we can probably assume he got a letter from the Nuisance Department, but because of his state of mind, didn't act. But I am concerned that my gardening friends or their neighbors will return to their homes and find fountains or sculptures or garden features gone, and they won't know if some jaded bureaucrat will consider their landscaping property trash or some common thief in an unmarked truck with their personal property. Because the city doesn't want to go out, doesn't want to go to the effort to open up and communicate in writing with individual taxpayers before they send out their contractors. Briefly, eighteen years ago, when I retired from farming and moved to Burlington, I could discern there was a problem in city management. George Washington has stated, quote, "Influence is no government," unquote. When our current city manager came on board and opened the books, most had their eyes open and could now see what was going on. When I would come down to the city council meetings during that terms of the previous two city managers, I would go home frustrated. I found it difficult to believe that all five council members would vote in lockstep with whatever the staff wanted. They forgot they were elected by the people for the people, and the staff was there to serve the citizens of the, of the city. For my college classes, including a couple of law classes, I understand governmental responsibility and the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. Please vote to open communication between homeowners and city employees and require at the minimum, post a letter. A taxpayer deserves written documentation of what the city employees wish to remove from his property. Please vote no to this nuisance thing until it's changed. Again, I would ask you at least ways, change the "may notify" to "shall notify" at the minimum. And on a personal note, I have a very steep bluff on my east side of my yard. It's along Sixth Street there. And I noticed in here that I have to keep that mowed down to eight inches, and the city can leave theirs to grow up to two foot. Somehow, that seems like a double standard. And, and quite frankly, you can't walk on that hillside. I mean, it's like this, when I go out on with the plant shrubs, I have to get a ladder and a rope and do it only once every two or three years. So, there's some things in here I really think need to be looked at and analyzed by maybe some citizens that's been affected before you just rubber stamp what the city brings before you. That's my comments.
Thank you, Tom. I, I do agree with them on the "shall." Mr. Harder?
My name is Don Harder. I live at 1018 Monticello in Burlington. I'm here somewhat on behalf, I'm not a legal representative of the Land, Southeastern Iowa Landlords Association. I have had no problems at all in regard to the previous enforcement of our nuisance abatement laws here in town. I think they've been done pretty good, but I had a couple of things that I was concerned about. I did not see in the new ordinance where, let me back up just a little bit. Previously, anytime I've had a problem with one of my properties, the nuisance inspectors go out, they decide that, or look at the property, they give me a call and say, hey, Don, do you realize you have a problem? And, of course, naturally, I didn't, or I would have taken care of it already. They post the house, but they also give me the phone call. Under the present reading, as, at least the best as I can read it, it no longer requires a phone call to the, to the landlord. Now, the landlords are pretty obvious because the same people that do the nuisance are also the rental inspectors. So, they have a copy of all the people who are landlords and what properties they are in charge of in town. I think it's a real good service because in my case, I was a little upset when I heard some information about this during this week, and that it sounds to me like you could go out and post one of my properties, I would never hear about it until I go down to pay my tax bill. Because, trust me, tenants are not gonna call me and say, hey, Mr. Harder, I got a nuisance abatement tag on my front door. You know, they just don't do that. No, I don't, very obviously, or at least I haven't had any do that. But I would like to have it stay similar to what it is now, in that the nuisance and abatement inspectors would be willing to phone call the landlords to tell them that there's a problem. I go out, and if I have a problem, those gentlemen call me and tell me. I go out, talk to the tenant, I said, all right, got two choices, you clean it up yourself, gotta do it right away into this timeline. And by the way, the gentleman, I have been very, historically, very good about working with you on a timeline, depending on what you have to get rid of. Or, you're gonna let me clean it up, but if you let me clean them up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna charge you for it. But I won't even know that it exists if all they do is tag the door. That's why I would like to see them to continue to do the phone call to the landlords. Now, a property owner, they're gonna know because they're gonna see the tag as soon as they get home, or should. But in the case of a landlord, you might not see that tag for quite some time and be really surprised when you go down to pay your taxes to see an abatement. Okay? Thank you.
I think that's a really good point, Don. Appreciate you coming down. You as well, Tom.
The current code doesn't require a phone call.
It's been a courtesy.
It's been a courtesy, and that's, that's, it's not designed to change that process. It's still designed to still tag it, but you'll still, I mean, the current process requires the posting. The new one requires the posting. They're gonna operationally do things the same way in terms of that phone call.
I have no objection to that. That phone call is really very important, I think. Mr. Shaheen?
Leon Shaheen, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Really, I'd like to see this proposed ordinance tabled for a little while to give people a little more time to really think it through. From my perspective, I'm a gardener, and pretty much the nuisances as designated here kind of leave me in no man's land. This time of year, with the spring flowers coming up, I use just about anything and everything to try to prevent an all-out assault by the rabbits on my garden. It's not exactly pretty.
There's a big difference, though, Leon, from, we know what nuisances look like.
Yeah, but, but, and, and I want to continue here. And I also grow, grow some wildflowers. Now, purple cone flowers, before they bloom, they look kind of ratty. And I'm not sure all your inspectors would know what it's echinacea, technically, purple cone flowers look like before they bloom.
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the whole yard full of purple flowers. It wouldn't be your whole yard.
Well, I've got about a third of it that way.
Leon, you're colorful. You always make me laugh.
Yeah, the whole west side of my, my property is in, in flowers. The other thing that, that comes to mind on this is on the snow removal. I'm the only guy on the street hardly that cleans my sidewalk. And then, as soon as I get it done, the snowplow comes by. Now, when you're talking residences or more elderly than I am, I never thought I'd talk about myself being that way, but.
You are.
The gray hair gives it away.
You've got snow on the roof, brother.
Definitely give you away.
You know, they can't afford, if they're on social security, they can't afford to have somebody come down the day of the snow, the next day, and the next day to clear the snow off their sidewalk. There, there needs to be some coordination in this ordinance. You know, when do you know the city plows are going to be done so you can get the snow off of your sidewalk? You know, I've had them come by two days later and just bury the sidewalk. And then, as far as the trash problem, I, I think there's a number of issues. I live on Mount Pleasant Street. I pick up stuff every day. It's just a non-stop onslaught. You know, you could drive by, and some of it, I'm not sure where it's coming from, or there's recycled material that's blowing away because people don't have adequate containers. But of late, it's been a real mess on Mount Pleasant Street.
I've had that same problem on Mason Road. I can't say it's been a total mess, but I've had to several times pick up trash that didn't belong to me, but it was in my yard, and I didn't want to just leave the trash in my yard. It doesn't look good. It becomes a nuisance. And most people, they care about their yard, that sort of thing. Some people, they don't. And when you're living next to that, Leon, it can make life pretty tough. And, you know, somebody brought up and says, what about the citizens? That's what this is all about. That's, that's why this is coming forward, because it's not fair to the citizens that are picking up other people's trash because they know it's not right. It's not fair to those of us that, yeah, I mean, I know it's tough even with the, the snow thing, but, you know, I've had to shovel it a couple of times, and when my back was out, I had to call in and have somebody come do it. I understand all of that. It's, you know, I know it costs money, and we're not trying to create something that's going to be a burden on people that are on a fixed income. But at the same time, you know, when we have, when we have the lady that, she can't sell her house because the house across the street from her is just full of nuisances and nobody wants to deal with it, that's a problem. And we're just trying to address that problem. So, I just want to, I just want to reiterate to you, it's not trying to be the Gestapo, but it's not fair to the people that are taking care of their yards and their properties and are paying taxes on their properties. It's not fair to them to allow these nuisances to continue.
And, and I want to address that down the road, another suggestion, but I, I know the rules here, what you can bring up in the hearing. But I, I do think one of the things that needs to be improved is the notice. I, I really think you, you need to make some attempt to contact by mail. Again, I've, I've got snow on the top.
I understand.
Either my wife or I could wind up in a hospital, and if either one does, the other is going to be there. We might be away for a week.
And I, I definitely understand your concern there, but in Tom's case, that, we had the notice in place then, and it still didn't, in Tom's neighbor's case, it still didn't evidently make the, the, the right contact. So... So, I, you know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough deal. I mean, I think we, we have to make every attempt to contact the, the people and I think the phone calls are good courtesy. I'm, I'm not, you know, to landlord, I think part of this is, uh, deals with absentee owners. They're out of the state and trying to contact them and that, right now, those folks are hand, they got our hands tied 'cause we can't get ahold of them like we can a resident. So, I think, I think you have to trust the fact that there's good people in the nuisance department. They don't wanna get blasted by private citizens. And I think they're gonna make every effort to reach out and, and touch these property owners because the last thing we wanna do is, is go in there and abate that. We'd rather see the property owner take care of it. In my opinion.
John, I agree with you. I think the biggest thing to remember is the nuisance department's gonna use due regard when they, when they go to these residences in order to determine what's a nuisance and what's not and what they need to do in order to abate that nuisance. I, I do think that there's a, there's an obvious difference between the person that has trash in their yard, that is trash and needs to be removed and, and the example, uh, that Tom brought up with his neighbor. I'm not quite sure what we have in place right now in order to make sure that the people that are abating these nuisances are held to a standard where they're not taking property that is of value. Uh, if we don't have something in place, it would probably be behoof of us to put something in place. Uh, but that can be done outside of the ordinance that, that's being considered this evening. We've talked about notice. Um, I think, uh, placarding the door is sufficient, especially for owner-occupied properties for, um, uh, nuisances that need to be abated immediately. Um, I think the courtesy phone call to property owners that are, have a, a relationship with the nuisance department is a great part of that. Uh, but it's not obviously in the ordinances being considered this evening. But that's simply what we're talking about is, is nuisances that need to be taken care of today. Issues that are long-term issues, um, those issues are gonna continue to see the letter, correct?
Yeah, the ma- major abatements outside of this, eleven through fifteen, would continue to see.
So, so we're really talking about, uh, a majority of, of grass needs to be cut, which I'd like to think that every homeowner in our community knows that they need to cut their grass. Um, and that there's not trash blowing around in their yard or trash that's been left in their yard for long periods of time. Um, those are two things that I hope every homeowner in our community knows. I know some people don't necessarily abide by that, uh, but I'd like to think that they know it. So, um, if at the end of the day, the city has to, to identify that home and then placard the front door and then abate the issue, then it was probably something that should have been identified by the homeowner long before then.
Well, there's, there's other issues here in Burlington, too. Just an example, where I live, you would think the property in back me was part of my property. It is not. So, if the city had a complaint with that and would, did not consult GIS before taking action, I have a bill on my property taxes for something that I don't know. And again, I, I think somehow, rather than promised down the road, that needs to be addressed in, in this chapter that before somebody gets placarded, gets a call or any, you at least check to make sure who owns the property. And there's lots of odd lots here in Burlington. Um, and, and you need to be careful who you're, who you're charging. And, and there's just nothing in here that I read that you take that initial step.
And I think that's the appeals process that Eric brought up.
Well, but, but before, before you get aggressive on that, you know, just common sense would say, particularly where you have L-shaped lots and there's a number in our neighborhood, that, you know, they should consult to make sure they're actually dealing with the right property owner.
Sure, and if a mistake was ever made, then it would go to the appeals process that Eric brought up so that that issue could be rectified.
But I hear, but I hear what you're saying, Ann.
All of our nuisances are tied directly to the GIS. We do not assess anyone that's, it's not on their property. Before we even go out to a property, we always consult GIS. That's how we track it. We, any abatement that comes to the city council has to have the PIN number, property address, owner address, mail address. So, that all has to come off GIS. So, we always consult that. That's, there's a lot of sections in, that are discussed, whether it's building permits, nuisance or rental. It's not specifically in our code, but that's the process that has to occur and that's what we do with this. We have to consult GIS 'cause we have to know whether it's owner, an owner that resides there or where the mailing address goes to or where their property is for a nuisance. 'Cause we, we realize, like, like Lance said, there's a lot of irregular shaped lots in Burlington and we don't wanna assess someone that it's not on their property.
And, and in that vein, and there was a property across the street from me that wound up in foreclosure and the city kept placarding that. Well, nothing happened. It got pretty ugly before something was done. And again, I, I think before anything's done, I'd like to see it in this chapter, what's required as far as due diligence, finding who's really responsible for that property.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Sam.
Tom, you spoke for an hour. Come on.
Four years ago, when I was Iowa State, my degree, I had the privilege to sit under Dr. Neil Harrow. Professor, I mean, I mean, at Iowa State University, he would wax elegant whenever he, you couldn't believe how fast he would speak. And everything he spoke was right on with the law. He'd say, if you're gonna write, write it all. I would like to see you amend this one sixty-three point oh-nine and change that second sentence from may serve notice to shall serve notice. That's very simple, just cross the one out.
I agree with you on that. I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tom.
Are we good, audience? Mr. Harder?
Eric.
Don Harder, ten eighteen Monticello. Would it be possible to, to insert the, the information on making a phone call as not a, a must? Because we know it's very difficult to get a, a hold of absentee landlords and so on, or absentee homeowners or property owners. But could that be inserted as a may or as a, I'm just thinking about down the road. Ten, fifteen years down the road, is some landlord going to have a new set of inspectors that look at this code and say, I don't have to make a phone call?
Could we have may, uh, for landlords?
That's a difficult one to do.
Yeah, 'cause they're gonna screen the phone. Are you gonna accept a message? I mean, phone message, does that count? Gets a little sticky.
If they decide not to accept the message, that's their problem. I mean, the homeowner's, uh, the landlord's problem, as far as I'm concerned. But I'm just thinking down the road, what if, if we have some new inspectors and they're reading through and very diligently following the code we have and it doesn't say anything in there about a phone call is nice, you know, or?
Oh, I agree, the phone call is nice. And I, my understanding is it was, it was changed so that the, the verbiage was not so ambiguous. Whatever that word is.
Ambiguous.
Thank you. And, um, I'm wondering if that would, would meet our needs. Does anybody know? 'Cause we don't wanna get into that gray area. I know, we don't wanna get in that gray area 'cause we're really trying to make it more enforceable.
Understand.
And get out of that gray, get out of the weeds is what we're trying to do.
I was just thinking that would be, take it away from, you know, we, we might have nice inspectors that really tried to do everything they can, but
But there's lots of niceties. You know, we made that phone call and it's their word against ours and, you know, does that get us in the weeds? I don't know.
One thing I would say is
Something to think about.
Is Eric, the, the orange tag, even if, even if we change it from sh, from may to shall, the orange tag is still gonna count as notice.
Yes, sir.
Which we're still doing today.
And I know neighbors are really good, for the most part, I know that was your concern, Don. They're really good about contacting other neighbors. Hey, you know, there's an orange tag on your car or on your house.
So, to me, Tom, I understand your point, but, but it's, it's, it's somewhat irrelevant because we're still always gonna, orange tag, um, regardless of whether that says may or shall.
If it says may, you have the option. If it says shall.
Okay.
Eric, does the, when that's not underlined in here, does that mean that that's already the way it's written in the code?
Anything that's not underlined in this section is already in the code.
So, it's currently says may in the code?
Yeah, but under one sixty-three point one oh, the second, third paragraph, that's where it says may and that could be amended to shall. I guess one thing with the code, this is an ordinance, it does take three readings. We could bring back an amendment at the next work session, have you discuss it, make sure you're comfortable with it and then have that amendment for the second reading.
So, this would be the first and then the amendment would, this?
This is the first reading on it. It takes a minimum of two unless you waive three readings. So, this, if you approve this tonight, we could still bring an amendment to the next meeting, have it reviewed by attorney and by counsel at the work session and then vote on it. For the second reading.
Can we waive the third still?
You probably wouldn't waive the third.
You've got as much comment.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I really wanna move forward with this, but I, I, I would like, uh, I'd like another week to take this in and to see, to see if we get any other, to me, I just don't want, if we're gonna make some adjustments, let's make the adjustments and let's move forward. Let's get it done. I don't wanna keep week after week, somebody bringing up another, another thing to add to this. So, I personally would like to, to delay this a week and then just try to get it all tied up.
Work on it in the work session.
And then, yeah, and then, uh, no.
If you
That's just me. Do this tonight and then they would amend it for the second reading, which we're gonna have to do anyways.
I mean, your other, your other comment, the other way that you're talking about doing it, Mayor, is pretty much you're, you're gonna wanna re, take time to then rewrite it, republish to do it that route. If you feel that's the route that needs to be done.
To me, that's, uh, that's where I feel comfortable with, but, uh, you know, what's, what's the fuss for the rest of the council?
I think, I think we can move forward with it as is, with the idea that Eric's gonna bring back the new language next week, changing that one word and then we go ahead and read it into the second reading and it just continues to follow down the path that it's already on. I mean, we still have
I don't feel comfortable with that.
Another, another month to get input on this. So, it's not like anything that isn't going to be, isn't gonna come up, isn't gonna come up within that time.
I think for the most part, the city does a great job. I'm sorry, Tom, for your neighbor's bad experience and you admitted there was some mental illness and some extenuating circumstances there. But for the most part, I think they do a good job. And about two weeks ago, Matt and I attended a nuisance meeting, seminar training in a town and really learned that as a city only has one chance to make a good first impression. One chance. So, I really feel the need to tighten up on this so that we can put our best foot forward.
Yeah, well, I, I'm kinda where Shane's at. I wanna, I would, I would prefer to look at, I think our, I think our staff is admirable in their efforts to, to contact people and do things the right way. And I think we are, we kinda end up being for right or wrong or indifferent. When things go sideways, hopefully, people will come to the city council and say, hey, this is out of whack. By the same token, I think there's a couple of other things in there that I, I'd like to see us work on in the work session before we move forward. So, I, I think we're kinda split on that. You know, I'd rather have it be right, take the time for it to be right and everybody comfortable with it and then move forward rather than, uh, approve it tonight and then make a, somewhat of an amendment 'cause there's a couple of other things on there that might need to be addressed, in my opinion.
John, what else do you see on there that you want changed?
Well, I think there's a couple, there's a couple of discussions about the may and the shall on, on notice. Uh, I think, and I think
What's it gonna bring up next week?
I, I think the phone call thing, I, I think we need to think about that. And I, you know, the letter didn't work in the case of Tom's neighbor, by the same token, um, there is a concern, Shane pointed out, there's a concern on the right of entry that I think we need to look at. And we just need to make sure that we're, that we're, uh, we're good. So, at this point in time, I'm, I'm not ready to vote yes on this. Uh, I'm ready to put it back in the work session and work on it one more week.
Um, that's where I am. I just don't feel comfortable.
So, that's where we're at.
So, you're ready to move forward, Linda? You wanna move forward, too? So, we're split. So, uh...
'Cause basically, it's just a technicality of the language. We're really not changing up a lot over what we're already doing. We're doing the phone calls now, we're not changing that.
So, I'm confused because if, if we were to move forward tonight and all the things that John just brought up and some of the things that've been discussed could still be changed in the work session next week. We would just be, and then we could still move those things into the ordinance for the following reading.
It's just gonna delay it two weeks. What's the problem?
I just, I don't see the point in delaying it at this point.
That's gonna delay it at least, at least a month.
That's my point.
But, but that puts it in a written notice, though, in the, in the paper. That we're, more people are gonna know that we're talking about.
I think that's gonna happen regardless.
Does that happen regardless, Jim? A written notice in the paper? If we just do an amendment?
I think that his point was is that people are talking about this, but you're, you're correct. It doesn't have a written notice unless you start the process over again.
I mean, I'm sure Tanner's gonna bring this up tomorrow in an article and I'm positive it's gonna be on the agenda for the next three weeks and we're gonna have more people here in two weeks to, to bring up more issues, which is fine. But I just don't see the point in delaying it. And we're gonna continue to talk about this over the next, tonight and then two more council meetings and we can do everything that we're discussing. There's no problem.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. Uh, my thing is, again, I don't, I don't see what the big, what the big issue is if it is delayed. I don't see what the big problem is. It's not even summertime yet, so, you know. I'm just saying, when it gets summertime, things gonna get crazy. But, uh, again, I just, uh, these are ordinances. If we're gonna do it, we, let's do it right. You know, let's make sure that we've got everything squared away and everybody's comfortable with it, that we take in all the information from, you know, from everybody and that when we get done, we can move forward. And then the third reading, we can fast-track it. Again, we're, we're not in the heat of things, so I don't know what the
So, what is, so if we move to close this, Jim, and if we're in a split vote, where's that put us for next week?
This is failed.
This is failed. So, that way start is back, yeah. Okay. But if we pass it tonight, it goes back to the work session. We can make the amendments, which is being discussed.
Well, I mean, you can make amendments. I mean, the, the changes in terms of the may versus shall is those, that's certainly a minor change.
Sure.
Change, depending on what you're talking about for change, uh, in sections one sixty-three, one oh-five and oh-six, you may change this, the substance of the, of the ordinance and have to start over again anyway, depending on how far you're wanting to go with that.
One sixty-three what?
Oh-six or oh-five?
One sixty-three or five.
And oh-six is based off of it, so.
How much of this is?
You can change some of the wording within a section and it's still considered a minor change. You take, you do, and I have to ask an attorney when you've gotten too far, but you do make, if you start making wholesale changes, you have to start over again anyway.
I mean, we start to get into rights of entry and warrants. I mean, how much of that is state law mandated? I mean, there's
We have, not verbatim, but very close, this one sixty-three oh-five is taken out of one sixty-five point one-five code inspection right of entry. It's basically the same language. Language already exists in our city code.
We're just
This just pulls it into the nuisance codes that it's clear that we still have that same right. It, it's still under our right now under code inspection 'cause they're code inspectors under chapter one sixty-five one-five. So, this isn't new for our city code. It's just in this chapter, which is part of our, trying to make everything clear and explained in this chapter.
So, if we were to take this into a work session, we'd simply be discussing whether or not it's included in this section, not whether or not we're changing
We'd still have the same right under, in different section of code.
So... Okay.
You're probably gonna see that from a staff perspective and how they have to do things, you're gonna have more changes. If they, if you don't make changes to the code, you're gonna have more changes for how staff has to go about doing business to, just to have a, a city attorney who feels comfortable with the process they're using than to make these changes. This matches what we are currently doing better than what our, what our current code does.
Okay, I'm still not comfortable with it, John. If we're split, then we're gonna have to move.
Yeah, I think we need work.
'Cause we could project, what about this case and what about this case forever?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm at a
And a lot of it, just people are preying on people's fears. So, they're gonna take this or they're gonna do this.
I mean, there's just no, even the right of entry inspection in the warrant section isn't gonna change in the ordinance section. So, I don't see any reason, whether it's included or not, it's gonna apply.
Our home rule, that, that's not, uh, we, we have to have that in there?
It's already in our codebook. This is just putting it into a different section.
Because if we, even if we say, okay, we're gonna take this out of this portion of this ordinance, it's still going to apply because it's in the code. We'd have to go back to the original code to change it, which isn't up for discussion.
Again, I'm gonna have to say no. Um, if you guys are three into it, then, then we'll move forward.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'd like to see us move forward and then we can have a more detailed conversation with it about it. 'Cause if, if we all decide next week in the work session that we don't wanna move forward, then we don't move forward at that point. But, but I'd hate to kill it tonight and then have to turn around and go back to John. That's where I'm at.
John?
Well, I'm gonna ask one more time, Eric, just so I don't get confused here. So, the underlined stuff was already in there? Or the underline is where we're making the changes?
Those are the new sections.
That's the new sections.
If you look at what he's saying in regards to 16305 and 16306, we have written in another section of our code already.
So they're going to apply whether they're in there or not?
It already applies.
It already applies. Okay.
It's just pulling it in here. Now, do you have some changes that have been made within that, or?
The chapter 163, 16515, which is our code inspection division, right of entry, that, it's very, I think it's not verbatim, but it's very similar. It's based off of that. That's in our city code. That's always been in our code. That's not gonna change. That allows us for rental or nuisance or building inspections.
Well, it, it does, it does, it does read differently than 05.
I don't like anything about that.
They still have to get a warrant for this, though, right, Eric?
We have to prevent credentials or present credentials and ask, we wanna be entered into your home based on the section of code. If they deny us, we'd have to get a warrant.
Yeah, I guess that's. Sorry, Matt, go ahead. I mean, I guess. I understand the concern of making sure that we're not just not blanketly going into, to, into or onto people's property. And I think it comes back to what I said before, using due regard. And if the property owner ultimately says no, then we're gonna have to go through any process, the same process we would if we were doing any search of somebody's property. So, like I said, that, it's not gonna change in this. It's always, it's.
See, the difference between that, 16515 to 16305 is the word unsafe. There's not, I don't, I'm reading it quick and I, my eyesight's not as good as it used to be, but I don't see where it says that we have to have the belief that there's an unsafe situation. It just says you can enter. And that's why I gotta look, why, why that clarified, you know, and on, on that part at least. I, you know, I'm not as concerned about the written notice as I am about Don's point. You know, we have a great set of city inspectors right now, but we need to make sure that we're writing this in such a manner that, you know, 10 years from now, as people retire, that it doesn't give everybody carte blanche to take people's property without proper notice. That's just my opinion. And I'm worried that that could happen.
I don't think it changes anything on the notice, John.
I don't think it does either. I think, I know, I.
It just not increases enforceability, so we can put the hammer down, we can put the wrench down, and we can actually abate some of these nuisances in a quicker fashion. That's the only thing.
And I think.
It's enforceability.
The gentleman brings up a very good point, and I think we need to probably ask the question is, at some point, do we put a policy in place where if something's taken from a home, that that's documented and documented thoroughly? So that we know exactly what was taken, so that we can apply that and hold the people that are abating that to a standard. Ultimately, that's what we're talking about when we're bringing out this gentleman scenario. But in, in the case of notice, I don't, I don't see any issue with moving forward and having a more detailed conversation. It's not perfect, we've agreed to that, but I don't wanna kill the whole thing and then not move forward and have more of a conversation about it next week. If we say, listen, we don't wanna move forward with it next, next Monday, then, then fine, then we can vote that way. And Annie will be here and be able to give more input at that point in time. But.
So we could, we can, even though we voted through, if we work on it in the work session, we're still not happy. We can, we can kill it then.
Right.
But that also delays it even further. So. Okay. Any, any more discussion as far as I'm concerned? Anybody?
So are we split still?
Uh, you know, I, I guess I would say that I would, I would vote to, to work on it next week, but I, the caveat would be that if we don't get those things addressed, it's gonna fail the next vote.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. I mean, that, if that satisfies everybody, let's, I'm ready to go on that.
Can I get a motion to close?
Uh, Your Honor, I move that the hearing regarding consideration of ordinance amending chapter 163 environmental nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa be closed. And I didn't mean to giggle there.
Second.
Move in second.
Yeah, this is to close.
Yeah.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Peanut butter man.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 163 environmental nuisances of the Code and Ordinances of ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Second. Kathleen?
McCambeau?
No.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. Number five is consideration of an ordinance amending the Code of ordinances, City of Burlington, by creating a new chapter 100, storm water management and drainage systems utility. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Eric will be throwing up a slideshow. It'll be relatively the same slideshow that you saw last week, talking about the storm water utility. Our current ordinance outlines just the idea that a storm water utility exists, but it doesn't really define the things that are necessary in today's world of setting up a storm water utility. If you hit the next slide for me. Uh, our current storm water rates are actually set up by resolution every year. As you can see up above here, residential is set up in two different categories, metered and unmetered. And then commercial and industrial is based off of impervious surface. Uh, there's five, four different thresholds, less than 25, 25,001 to 50,000, and then 50,000 to 75, and then 75,000 plus. And, go ahead. So what we had done as we, we completed a storm water utility study with Veen, Strain, Kim, and looked at several different methods on what to go to. The one that we presented a couple of weeks ago and that I talked about last week is the equivalent residential unit. And so what they do to, to, to get to that point is they take an average of about 150 homes on what the impervious surface is for those residential properties. And the average that they came up was 33, 3,360 square foot of impervious surface. And so I guess impervious surface, which is defined in the new ordinance, is surface that won't allow rainwater to soak into the ground. So concrete, gravel, rooftops, things of that nature. Um, and so our, our ERU would be set at $2.58 as of July 1. If you hit the next slide for me. The all, all residential, single family and duplex would be applied with the $2.58 per unit across the board. And then, uh, commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential would have ERUs applied to the property. And you can see the number of properties that, that are considered in each of the categories. Residential is by far the, the largest of parcel numbers. If you hit the next slide. Uh, so, so why the ERU method? Why the change in the ordinance? Uh, the ERU is a more equitable way of applying the storm water rate to, to across the board to its residents and commercial industrial properties. And also, it has a better data to back it up than, than what we've been using in the past. So, so what does that mean in an actual rate payer's structure from what they currently pay to what they'll pay underneath the, the new ordinance structure? Um, as you can see on the left hand of the monthly fee, you can see the $12.50 from 2,000 all the way to 28,000, or to 25,000 is what it should be. Um, and then over to the right, you see the fluctuation with the ERUs being applied for the square footage. So I think that's the big, that's when I'm talking about the equitability of it. Uh, so somebody with 1,000 square foot of impervious surface and one person with 25,000 square foot of impervious surface under our current methodology pays the same rate. If you'd hit the next slide. And so I wanted to present to you some, some images of what the impervious surface looks like for some parcel owners. I just happened to do some for Mr. Crowner a couple of weeks ago. And so I did borrow those, but it also includes some of the adjoining property owners. Um, as you can see, the red outline is the impervious surface around the parcel, the property that the people own. It just so happens in this area, the road is private. It is not a publicly owned road. So the road is also thrown into the adjoining parcel owner's property and considered impervious surface. Uh, and then you can see the dollar figure. It's kinda hard to see on the slideshow, um, but the goodwill is $74.82. And a lot of the reason why that bill is up is because of the road that's contained with it. If you'd hit the next one, that maybe is a better. Uh, so, so Mr. Crowner was paying $12.50 on his Main Street car wash. And actually, we'll see a decrease with the new structure at $10.32. So there will be some decreases, but along with increases. If you would hit the, go back to the last slide. Uh, so one of the bigger factors here is parking lots for impervious surface. So as you can see, Lowe's, Lowe's has a fairly substantial parking lot. Their bill will be 502, 505 dollars. I don't know what they currently pay. I will get that information for you next week. I saw that today as I was putting it together. I was like, it'd be really nice to know what they currently pay to what it will be in the future. But that, those are the, some of the fluctuations that you'll see with this new code. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think it was on your previous slide, wasn't it? What they currently pay is in it on here?
That, it probably is somewhere in there, but, I mean, you can see the max is not included in there. So I'm assuming they have over 400,000 square foot. But I'd have to look that up. I can answer any questions you have on that. Um, I kinda flew through that, but I wanna try and, I wanna try and make sure that I talk about everything that, that there's questions on. Uh, the, the code itself talks about, is a lot of definitions of what storm water is, whose responsibility of maintaining things are, what impervious surface is. Sets up a storm water utility fund. We currently have, where storm water and sanitary water goes into the same fund. Uh, this ordinance calls for a splitting of those two funds. And it also sets up the structure for the ERU. Uh, every year, we will set the ERU rate by resolution. But the structure is there where it talks about how the ERU is established. From time to time, that may need to be adjusted. So at some point, we may need to go in and reestablish what that ERU rate is, the 3,360 square foot.
Nick, what percentage of the additional revenue is simply from the accurate adjustment of impervious surface for property owners instead of the ERU change?
Correct. Um, I don't have that specific answer, but a large portion of, of the revenue increase is from that, that true calculation of what impervious surface is and getting the appropriate person billed.
So even if we weren't going to an ERU system, we would still see an adjustment of some type?
Correct.
Just by going to a more accurate mapping?
I have that from a previous slideshow that Veen gave.
It was about half of the change in gross revenue.
Okay.
Increase. But I, I don't know what the exact percentage was, but he said about half.
I can go back and look. I know that, I know Veen, Strain, Kim gave me that information as to what, what the threat, what that would be with true calculations.
Okay. Thank you.
Then following this, the other shoe that comes, comes to, or drops is a credit system, correct?
Correct.
In our previous discussions, okay. As far as someone, a property owner being able to mitigate some of that. Did you say 258 or 250? I'm sorry.
258.
258, okay.
Correct. I'll, the slideshow did say 250.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Any questions or concerns from anybody from the audience? I see one.
Leon Chahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I, I guess, I'm kinda ambivalent on this. That's a surprise. But I, I guess one of the questions that comes to mind, when I look at runoff from my property, for instance, there's very little. And it never really does, what runoff there is, never does enter the storm sewer system. On the other extreme, when you have acres paved over in asphalt or concrete, there's gonna be a lot of runoff, no matter what you do. And I, I guess I'm, I'm a little curious about how that's considered.
That, I think that's kind of what this is designed to do. It's designed to capture those people who have a lot of impervious surface and have them pay more of their fair share or the, the better percentage of the storm water runoff fee. And we talked about it at previous meetings, a majority of the homeowners in our community are gonna see a decrease from the $12.
Not homeowners, all homeowners.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Staying the same.
Homeowners staying, but a majority of the people are gonna see a decrease because the ERU change was gonna lower their, their cost. Commercial properties. Okay.
Yeah, and I, I guess that's somewhat of the problem that I have. Cause outside of the part of my driveway that's on actually city property, that's the only water coming on to, to the storm sewer system. So as a homeowner, you look at it, should I really be paying anything? And I know there's costs when you're in a community that need to be shared, but, you know, from the standpoint of what I'm contributing to storm water runoff, most homeowners contribute little to none. And under the proposed plan, we don't get a benefit of that. And that's something to consider.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? Any other questions?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move that the hearing regarding the consideration of ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances, City of Burlington, by creating a new chapter 100, storm water management and drainage systems utility be closed.
Second.
Move in second. Kathleen?
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of the ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances, City of Burlington, by creating a new chapter 100, storm water management and drainage systems utility.
Second.
Move in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, number six, we have consideration of transit grant application.
Good evening, again.
Aye.
Long time no see. Uh, this resolution approves a grant application to acquire, it's a consolidated app for transit funding. Uh, we do this every single year, where we, we go through and we have state and federal monies. I wanted to, to go over, this current year is FTA funds or federal transit money is 399,497. STA funds or state transit monies is 233,679. Of course, I didn't put the numbers in there digitally, and then I had to handwrite them, so you can see how bad my handwriting is. But I wanted to give you kind of a chart of kind of the performance of transit over the last more than 10 years now. On, on where the numbers have fluctuated and kind of the reasons behind that. I did 2018 year to date, so it's, it's about 50% of our numbers for rides and then costs down there. But everything else is, is true. The FTA and STA funds are based off of rides and rev, and miles driven from the prev, from two years prior. And so you, you'll see some of that jump two years later or in the numbers that you're getting for money. Both years, I, I think I misstated this, both years are in actually an increase from the previous year in FTA and STA funds. Um, you can see the two previous years before that, and we actually took a decline in STA funds last year, but see an increase back this year. Our total operating budget is just under a million dollars again. And we are a little bit above track. We had some, some costs this last December that took us above that for some, some fixes. Um, in, in this grant, we're also asking for capital funds in the amount of $396,000 for replacement of four light duty buses. The way that that works is, is a 85, 15% match. So the match, if we were to replace all four, is 59,400 on our end. It is based off PTMS, I don't know what that means either. PTMS score, and I just know that's an acronym that we use, is scored. And so the reason why the four buses are on there is should there be federal monies that come forward to replace more buses? We wanna be, we wanna have them on the transportation improvement plan to be available to go after. If we don't have them on there, we can't go after them. So there's no, there's no penalty for having them on there. Uh, some of the buses have been on our tip for a long time and haven't been replaced. So hopefully, we can get some, some more money to get some replaced. We currently have two that are ordered, will be here at the end of May, so it'd be nice to get some, some nice buses.
Hey, I've gotta throw this at you just because I've got a guy that will not leave me alone, but.
Bike racks.
I just gotta bring it up again, bike racks, so.
Uh, the difficulty with some of the law, with the medium duty buses is the length of storage by adding the bike racks on there. Um, I think the wheelbase is 176 inches. Um, and then the storage inside there, you add another five foot on or so for a bike rack. We can't fit it in our buses, or in our barns. So that is the one concern. Now, you could incrementally replace them. They may not fit into the bus barn. But you could park them outside, not ideal. But you would, it would have to be an incremental changeover for the bike racks. They're not, they're not cheap either. So. So, it's a possibility. If you want me to go towards that direction, I guess...
I've only got one person that's saying, I just thought it was a great idea and there are other communities that are doing it.
Now you got two. I think it's a great idea.
It is, and there are other communities that are doing it, and I don't want to, uh... Every time I run into this guy, he's like, "Man, any word on the bike rack?" So, I, I just don't want to, I don't want to fail him, I'm going to keep, uh...
Could we do it just on a smaller one?
You could. I mean, their, their light duties would probably fit the bike rack.
Would it be a year-round thing? Is it hard to take them off? Take them off to store the buses in the winter?
I would leave them on all year round.
Okay, I didn't know if it was something that you could easily take off for the winter.
I haven't seen it. I guess I don't, transit's not my, my forte, I guess, but I, I would think you could probably have it applied to the side of the bus, like a single unit rack, but I'm not sure. I have never seen that before.
I just see it as something to make our community more marketable to young people. So young people sometimes don't have money for a car payment, but they could, you know, live downtown, work downtown, take the, their bike wherever they wanted to.
And I guess the one thing on our, our current system is, is it's demand and response. So, if I were to call in tomorrow morning and say I need a ride from, you know, one-two-four Glendale, they'd ask me to go to the corner, and they would pick me up on a sh- yeah, we have two routes that run a kind of, run of a shuttle route. They'll pick you up in one, if you're on the same side of town, they will drop you off at your location or relatively close to it. Or they'll tag you up with one of the routes that goes east-west, or take you to the depot and have you transition. So, I don't want to refer to it this way because it's not, but it's, it's a little bit more flexible. I don't want to say it's a taxi cab service, because it's not, but it's a little bit more flexible than traditional, you know, structured route transit systems. So, I, I haven't seen any push for bike racks from my end, other than from the gentleman that you've talked about, but I'm not saying I'm against it, it's just we would have some logistical things to worry about.
Just a quick question, do you have any idea what a ballpark would be for one bike rack?
I think to modify it after you've purchased it, it's about five thousand bucks.
That's a lot of money.
Boy, they're not giving anything.
A lot of money there.
Okay. Are, are any questions, concerns from the audience? I see none. Okay. You guys good?
Great.
Your Honor, I move at the hearing regarding the consideration of a transit grant application be closed.
Second.
Move to second.
That's okay, you didn't get any sleep.
Hey, we're about through this meeting, guys, and we're doing it. Kathleen?
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption, no, that's you?
Yep, no, I need to go back to the resolution.
Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Reso- your Honor, I have a resolution approving the transit gra- grant application.
Second.
Sorry, skipped a spot.
It's all right, I do it all the time. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Well done.
Now, your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Right-Away located adjacent to property at fourteen oh eight Harrison, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
No changes from the previous reading. This again is an extension of what's been done to the north. That was previously vacated and sold a couple of years ago. It was recommended approval six to zero by the planning commission as well. There will be easements retained over the property.
This is the last reading for this?
Second reading.
Second.
But I don't think that would be an issue.
Do I do that now?
Forego the last one.
Then, your, your Honor, I have a motion to amend. To amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street Right-Away located adjacent to property fourteen oh eight Harrison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading, and for the final adoption of the ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street Right-Away located adjacent to property fourteen oh eight Harrison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Vote as amended.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, okay. Resolutions?
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving loan agreement authorizing the issuance of, I'm trying to read this out of my glasses, I sound like John, eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five thousand general obligation corporate purpose bond. Did I read it wrong?
Eight, eight million?
Oh, thank you. Eight million two hundred and eighty-five thousand general obligation corporate purpose bond, series two, eighteen A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Second?
We should share these.
That was wishful thinking, anyways.
This is a borrowing for, or the, for a few different CIP projects. Flood, flood wall, one point nine million. Anticipate to be paid back with a state sales tax increment. Two different bridge projects, Mount Pleasant Street and Central Street Bridge. Mount Pleasant Street being the complete replacement, and the Central Street, some repair work that needs to be done there, about four point seven million dollars total for those two being repaid out of TIF funds. And the remainder of the eight million two hundred and eighty-five thousand is for street improvements, the, and as Nick talked about, the HMA street improvements, that's the majority of the funds. There's also some miscellaneous, uh, street upgrades that we allow for just whatever street projects may come up during the course of the year that are a little bit larger than what can come out of the general road use tax fund, but may not necessarily, that don't rise to the, this, to the level of having been something that was planned as part of the, the five-year capital plan. Those, those street projects are paid for out of property taxes, debt service levy. We went out and, Piper Jaffrey did the, the selling on this, and Travis Quires was here doing some reviews of that over the course of the last couple of meetings. These are being paid for between, from fiscal two thousand nineteen through two thousand thirty-three for the payback. Three percent interest is the, the majority of those bonds. I think the last year might be three point one five percent. At the, with the, with this borrowing and the payments that occur in June, we will end the year using sixty-five percent of our debt limit capacity of what we're authorized to, to borrow with GO, GO-backed. So then it fits within our standard, we have a, within our po- financial policies to, to stay below seventy percent and maintain, maintain the additional amount for emergency purposes.
Sweet. The GO-backed, is that the TIF side?
Uh, GO-backed, they're all GO-backed, they're all general obligation bonds. So they, they all get a rating based off of the full faith and credit of the city, but the street portion, about one point six million dollars, the general street portion are what's to be paid for out of prop- debt service levy. The rest will be the TIF or the sales tax increment from the state.
Sounds good. Any questions, concerns from the audience? Thank you, Leon. Counsel? I mean, thank you, audience. Counsel?
I'm good.
Okay. Kathleen?
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the twenty eighteen Agency Street widening project, East End.
Second?
Second, sir.
Mr. Mack?
Don't let me drive home tonight.
He just walks through this place like he owns it.
The resolution in front of you would award contract to Mike Nelson Con- Construction in the amount of one point nine, one three zero one, or three one, let me start over. One million nine hundred thirteen thousand, thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, the Agency Street project had a, has a construction budget with engineering backed out of it of one point eight three, eight-six-two million. As I discussed before, the, kind of the discrepancy between the bid out dollar figure and what we have remaining would be covered by road use tax. That's why we're trying to back out some of the work that we had done, the one point four million dollars worth. We actually have a pre-construction meeting this Friday. Assuming weather stays in the right direction, I would see construction start around May first.
Yes. We're going to be getting her done this summer. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None.
Kathleen?
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a resolution adopting the personal manual for non-union employees. Did I skip one? Did I skip number three?
We can go to that one, though.
I'm always out of order.
Usually that's me, I'm glad it's somebody else tonight.
Your Honor, backing up to number three, we have a resolution approving the final plat of Gillette Farm subdivision.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tisland?
This is a three-lot minor subdivision located partially in the city of Burlington area to the east of this hash line, and then partially in Des Moines County. It is a, kind of a farming property right now. They're looking to split off the buildings from the remaining portion of land to the south of it, which is farmed as agriculture. Here kind of shows the, the split a little bit more as well. The houses and buildings would be on one lot, and the remaining portion of farmed land to the south would be, remain outside of this subdivision.
Appreciate it, Ford. Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None. Good.
Let's do this. Kathleen?
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye. Now, number four, you've all been waiting for, the resolution, your Honor, for adopting the personal manual for non-union employees.
Stephanie?
I need a second.
A second.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, in your packet is the manual. We update this annually, it's effective July first. Just a few changes were made on page two, the salary adjustment portion. Well, in fact, it's not changed, it's the same as last year, but the increase is scheduled to be two point two-five percent, which matches the rest of our union contracts. And then on page nine is the insurance portion, that also was increased, that the employees will contribute six percent of the cost of the coverage. That's an increase from four percent from last year. And again, that's matching what the union contracts have increased also. And then the last page is the salary schedule that's used, based on the different pay grades, and we use a schedule that shows a minimum pay, a midpoint, and a max. And so all those schedules were increased by two percent, so we don't have that compression issue with the union contracts are the same way. Those are all increased, um, that same percent, so...
Okay. We all knew about that, and that was coming. Any questions from the audience? Okay. Counsel, we good? Kathleen?
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
All right, Graham Murray.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the city of Burlington, Iowa goal-setting report dated March twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Thank you both.
Speaker packet has a full report written out by Jeff Schott from the Institute of Public Affairs at University of Iowa. Fairly long packet, the long and short of the four-hour meeting and the comments that, the input that came from the council and staff both ahead of time, that got compiled in there. And then your voting at the end of that meeting, including the mayor's weeks or months almost after the, the meeting occurred.
Thank you, James.
You're welcome. Is summarized on page, what page is that, thirteen of that document, which is like a hundred and twelve out of the packet? My goodness. And the items that rose to be focused on in there, the top one was to clearly evaluate and establish policies and guidelines to make building projects easier, having a checklist guidelines, who to contact, responsibility, et cetera. There are four of, of four priorities below that that were tied. Continue to examine alternative revenue sources. Participate in planning and financing of indoor rec facility. Make a decision regarding components and priorities of the Riverfront Development Project. And examine a tag program, large trash bins and impact on nuisance community appearance. If you're willing to accept the, the ongoing obligations along with those new priorities for the next two years, would recommend that you approve the report as his.
Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Leon. Counsel?
Good.
I'm good. Let's work on them. Okay. Kathleen?
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Rinker, you want to take care of four and five for us?
Sure. I had to think about what we were going back to for a second. They're wearing on the list, I had to go back to the other list. Your Honor, I have in front of you a resolution of support for a workforce housing tax incentive program project by Kelly Hall.
Mr. Chehan?
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A second.
Thank you.
To expedite things a little bit, I'd like to address both of them at the same time, if I could. I guess for the number four, where is that project going to be?
It's the Dial Building.
The Dial Building?
Mm-hmm.
And then on number five, what is that? Is that part of the Manor Mall?
Yeah, southeast corner of that was set up with the potential for housing. I don't even know if they have an identified project that they're moving forward with, but they're trying to get stuff in place in case they do.
I guess the only thing I would say on that, we spend so much money granting incentives to companies to come here, they pay less than a living wage. I've got to pay for those incentives, and then I've got to pay for incentives to build housing for people. Surely, there's got to be a better way.
I don't think this is doing you bad.
As Leon points out, this is based off of having a tax abatement program in place. This doesn't add a new tax abatement, but it does, it, it is based off of the tax abatement that's in place.
Just want to thank you for your consistency, Mr. Chehan. It's always good to see you, my friend. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Okay. Well, to number four first, resolution of, of support for workforce housing tax incentive. Kathleen?
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
I can, we're into the second one.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I have a resolution for support for a workforce housing tax incentive program project by Burlington Crossing Real Estate LLC.
Was the, Leon already covered it. Was there anybody else that, everybody else is good? Counsel, are we good?
I need a second.
Yep.
Second.
She started strong. Counsel, are we good?
It's been a while. Yes.
Thanks for reminding me, buddy. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, this is time where we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there anybody that has a comment tonight? Mrs. Starling, Superintendent.
Ready, Starling. Seventeen South Seventh Street, Burlington, Iowa. And, uh, I really have some, uh, a few comments I'd like to make, and I don't know what I addressed them as questions or what. But, uh, I hope I'm at the right place. First, I want to thank, uh, the city council and, and all who has, uh, put the shelter house together down at Maple, down at the Glasswike, Glasswike Park. I think it's very nice. My concern is I read an article in the paper, and I'm very concerned about it. Because, I don't know, does this reflect the, uh, the thoughts of a certain group of people over other group of people? When it said, uh, certain people have privileges, and then you, you name off other races, by one, one race. So I'm very concerned about that. And when we, uh, get a new police chief, if I'm wrong, correct me, that is, uh, put in place by the city council, is that right?
By the city manager.
City manager chooses him, confirmed by the city.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm concerned now that the chief has been put in place, could I say by the city, the city manager? Is that right? Okay, thank you. And when I see statements saying certain groups has certain privileges over others, it really, you know, does that express the idea that every one of another color think that way over another group of people? Am I, I'm just, I'm just putting this out.
What article are you saying that who said this?
What you're referring to.
April the 1st article.
And who said what?
I'll never call the name. It's there. I'll never call the name.
Is it someone from the city? Is it city staff?
I'm just saying, it's in the Hawkeye, that's all.
Is it?
I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave. Privileges. That's what I said, privileges.
I don't know anything about it.
Oh, boy.
Was it a letter to the editor?
There was an article that the students wrote that are in that class at West Burlington. Is that what you're referring to, maybe? Okay, sorry.
But anyway, such as, such as, if I can, I wish I'd have brought it, such as, if I pass by a police, and my taillight isn't out, I mean, if I pass by a police, I don't have to worry about having a mind check concerning about my taillight being out, a mind check of, did I put my signal on? But here come another one, and it stated that possibly could be pulled over, whatever. So I'm thinking, if one person like that is thinking like that, how many more is thinking like that? Oh, compared to another group? And tonight we have a chief, and I'm wondering his thinking. No reflection against him, anything. And since our city manager was the one that, is I'm not right, put him in, hired him, just said hired him, is that right? Am I not right? Can't hear you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. So I guess I'm talking to the right, the right one. All right, I'm wondering, since everything starts all over again, will it be fair to say that he will be doing a background check to see as if he don't know the police that he's worked with for years? I'm just saying. To check and see if, what kind of background did this person really, really come out of since he's coming in new? Is he, does he have that type of mentality that, as the individual had mentioned, going to discriminate against one over another one, individual? And then the next is, I'm trying to cut all this short, because I had quite a bit, is concerning the body camera. I'm very concerned about the body camera. When is the body camera to be turned on? When's the body camera to be turned off when you are pursuing, pursuing a person maybe have, I mean, whatever, have done, whatever. I'm just concerned about, does the city manager and the city council and the lawyer that's hired by the city allow to give the public that type of information? Is that something secret? After all, you're the boss.
Reverend, I guess I...
In regards to a policy like that, you're certainly welcome to talk to Chief Kramer. We do have policies in place for how the cameras are used and when they're supposed to be turned on and off. And I'm certainly be welcome to share with you what the policy is that they have established and in place.
And as far as, as far as the other questions, I would, I would say that if you have a question with regard to, first off, Chief Kramer already worked for the Burlington City Police Department, so he was vetted along that process. And then I would also say that it's really difficult for us to make any comment or provide any direction based off of an article in the Hawkeye when I don't think anybody up here is familiar with that article or what was said in it. So if it's something where you want additional input, I'd be more than happy to address it. I'm sure anybody up at this table would. But we'd need more information with regard to what the, what the issue is. Other than that, I...
Well, I'd just say one, one group has certain privileges over others. That's basically what I was saying.
And I think everybody up here would say that
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
we don't view any one person or group of people as having an advantage over, over another. We don't...
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna dispute you, but let's face it, we, you know, we, we understand what you're saying. I mean, you probably do your best, but it's there. I mean, come on now, let's, let's just be truthful about it. You know, that's, that's my concern tonight. Let's, let's make everyone fully accountable for their actions. Let's treat everybody the same. And I know that's tough to do, because why, basically, one, one group want to stand on the other group's shoulder so that they can build their kingdom, and that's the way it always have been. So I had a few other things that I wanted to ask, but I won't bother that. The body cameras was one, and I think I've, I've said, I'll just leave it, I'll just leave it, I'll just leave it at that. I can get you the paper if you want the paper. I can get you the paper. And I'm not trying to badger anyone, the writer of the paper, I'm just saying what I read in the paper. And I'm just wondering, does that reflect the thinking of that group of people over another group of people? And when we have such things going on with the slaying of, first of all, people, and then, secondly, African-American people, it's very, I'm very concerned about, oh, everything else, I mean, you don't have any problems with me, whatever, building, bridges, you don't have any problem about. But my concern is when it comes down to lies being taken out, fully investigation, fully investigating. And that's why I come back to the city council because, not city council, but I come back, well, to the city, because you hire the police. And that's my, I am very concerned because you have a lot of hurting people, many hurting people, that feel like no one cares, no one want to hear them. And I'm a person that I just... And I don't need to, you know, if I say something or do something, I will apologize. But I think, you know, I think, I just think that we need to develop confidence in one another. And I think we have, I think we failed in that area. Say this, sit down. I think we failed, this is my judgment, this is my judgment call. Nobody has confidence in one another. Basically, things are done, and I heard tonight, I heard something else I want to comment on too, is concerning the, the city, the lawyer for the city. It started out, years ago, we lost confidence. At least I did. When I was told it's going to be a certain amount of money, and it was way up there. And some of you know what I'm talking about. So we don't have, we losing confidence in one another. And then when you, things happening, basically, it's African-Americans being taken out. And I'm not saying that the African-American, whatever, was, was writing, doing what he or she did. When you run from the police, you put you, yourself, I believe I can say this, in harm's way. When they say stop, stop. When they say surrender, surrender. And I think it should be, this is just me, completed from the beginning to the end. And then, I think, maybe I missed it. But I think truth should come from the city. Truth should come from the city addressing me as a taxpayer, us, I'm speaking for myself. Anyone else, and maybe that, maybe that has taken place. Maybe I missed it. But I'm just making a comment, I hope I'm making a comment, I guess. Maybe something to be considered, you know, because there are people out there listening, but they're not hearing maybe what they really, really want to hear. And I think they really, really want to hear truth from those that they are paying, taxpayers are paying you, just like you are paying taxes also. But I think you as a, as a, as a council, you are to feed us as we feed you as well as being a taxpayer. That's all I'm saying. And I think it should come from, from you, anything, whatever it is, I think it should come from you to console people over here on this side, not trying to take your place, not trying, because as a pastor, I, I get the same thing. I mean, everybody not going to agree, I understand that, you know, but we strive to do our best. And not that you're not doing your best, I'm just making a comment. All right?
Thank you, Reverend. I'm glad you came and spoke to us tonight. And I'm, I'm glad for your, your presence, and I'm glad that you came tonight and unburdened your heart. And I agree, implicit bias is out there. And I am confident that the new police chief will help build up your confidence again. And I agree, progress isn't always in a positive direction, isn't always forward. We take some steps back, but hang in there with us, and I think you're going to see some, your confidence grow, and Burlington continue to move in a forward direction. But thanks for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Quick thing. I just, Bob Troutman, West Burlington. I recently bought a house in Burlington fix-up. And I just seen Burlington downtown in a lot of different angles, and I see what a big job you guys got ahead of you, cleaning it up. So I think you're doing a good job and on the right track for getting it cleaned up because it needs it bad. And anything any citizens can do to help, they need to. So I think you guys are on the right track.
So you want to help clean up? Saturday, 8:30 at the port, Earth Day cleanup day.
One more thing.
Can we count on you?
Then I did have a problem with, with our neighborhood right away, and it took seven months to get it taken care of. And when I got hold of the landlord, he said, well, you should have called me a long time ago. And I told my wife, why should I call you? It's your property. It's not mine to take care of. It's yours to drive by, it's yours to check on. You want to own the property, you take care of it, just like I trim my yard and mow my yard. But that's all I had to say. You guys are doing a good job, and Burlington's on the right track.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Leon Shahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. First, got a minor problem, but I, I think city staff needs to know about it. On Mount Pleasant Street, in the neighborhood where I live, there's a series, and I'm not interchanging terms here, of five sinkholes developing along where they installed the storm sewer. And second with that, they used the quick patch method. It didn't work. Now we've got a chuck hole and a sinkhole, and I hope we can get that fixed.
Thank you.
And then, and I'll be brief because it's supper time for me as well. As far as cleaning up Burlington, we've got a number of things. And I think we're kind of looking at it from asylum management point of view. Looking at the code that was discussed earlier. I'd really like to revisit what we're doing on recycling. I make a real effort. About half of what otherwise would go to landfill, I recycle. One way or another gets recycled. As opposed to doing bigger trash cans for people, maybe it would be cheaper if we offered free recycling containers and basically restarted the recycling program. Because there's few people on my street recycling. I'm one of the few. And it's, it's cheap, we have the program in place. I'm all for low-cost methods.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay, again, just for people when they, when they comment at the end, if it's something that's not on the, on the agenda, again, we can't get into whole conversation with it, so, so don't think we're just brushing you guys off. That's just, it has to be on the agenda, otherwise we can't, we're not supposed to get into the back and forth. So nobody else from the audience? All right, man. It was a busy night. We, we got through. Mr. Tisland?
Reminder again, Earth Day, rain or shine, 8:30 at the port this Saturday.
Rain or shine, come on up if you need something to do.
Preferred ladder, right?
Yeah, no doubt.
Just a reminder, those of you that are working on your, your fitness plan, where are you spring? We don't know what happened to it. But the Great River Bridge Race is on for Saturday, May 19th, so lace up those shoes, do walkers, runners, joggers, fitness wannabes. This is going to be an event. This is going to be a happening event you do not want to miss. So includes a tee-shirt, adult beverages, I don't know if there's music, but it's definitely going to be fun. So sign up for the Great River Bridge Race. You can tell the bottom portion has been cut off. That means I signed up. So that needs you to sign, you need to sign up too. So signing you up, John.
Good luck with that.
Got a wheelchair?
Sorry, man. Good luck with that.
Screw on that screw.
Mr. Phillips?
I have nothing.
Mr. Rinker?
I do have something. I did a almost five-hour ride-along with the Burlington Police Department the other night in the POP unit, and I will tell you that their, the job that they do is amazing. So I commend them, and I commend Officer Pope. And it was very eye-opening, and I plan to do many more. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to attention. I plan to do a 24-hour one with the fire department here in the next couple of weeks, but with a newborn at home, I got to squeeze that in with my wife first before that's going to happen.
You're just helping me get more sleep.
Yeah. That's it.
Jimmy Frenault?
Citywide cleanup. You begin that today, or? So Monday's route began today, and over the course of the next six weeks, you'll work through the five routes. I still don't understand where five days is six weeks, but somehow that gives you an idea that it's not quite an even week for day. So they'll be moving through the community over the course of the next six weeks. Can look on a website under your department's page for information on what, on the items that can be placed out there, what cannot be placed out there, the extent of what can be done. So certainly encourage people to take advantage of that. Nick, did you have something?
I know I've talked plenty tonight, but I wanted to give you some images of what the flood wall is looking like right now.
Sweet.
The rain-snow mix we had, probably delayed it a little bit. This is from the south side. Vast improvement from what actually I saw it on Friday. They didn't have any of the grade filled in. You can see the end of the wall, and then if you go to the next picture, it'll show kind of what the imagery will look like at grade. So this is the trail along the flood wall. So it comes up to me a little bit higher than my hip because I'm short. But you can see the curb line of the new, of the new parking lot being put in there. This is where the old boat dock was, or ramp, rather. And then that's one of the wet wells where we'll be pumping storm water over top of the wall. So things are coming along. Hopefully, we can get good river and weather coming up. But just wanted to give you a couple of images because it's kind of a closed-off site. You can kind of see some stuff down on the south side now because the Hescos are down, which makes me a little nervous, but.
Hey, as this progresses, we'll take, we'll take, we'll take more pictures.
Yeah, and there's some paving down there right now, just on the, between the port and auditorium, kind of a mock-up of what the paving look like. I don't know how long it'll last in that setting as a sample, because I know they're demoing some of that area now. So if you wanted to, I could, it's really, there's a north gate entrance there on that, and we could walk through there and see it. I think maybe some of you have actually seen it back when.
Yeah, I was down there a couple of weeks ago.
That'll be kind of what it looks like down there. The bricks are a little bit different. Those are brown, where we're going to have a little bit more reddish tones, but it gives you the idea of what it looked like. But that's just, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would just like to bring attention to Tanner's haircut. I had to do that when I first started going bald, too.
Me, too.
So I want to, I wish you the best on that.
Do you think he paid for that?
I think he paid for that, too much. We wish, Annie is missing tonight. She has a sick daughter, so hey, Annie, I know you're watching. I hope, I hope your daughter gets feeling better. And if you're wondering how come I've been looking so, so disturbed tonight, it's tax season. I paid my taxes today, so I just want to let everybody know. I got that taken care of. Is there anything else?
No meeting next week.
No meeting next week, Free Monday.
Sweet. That would be my first free meeting.
Yes. Good timing. Can I get a motion?
I've moved close.
Second.
Move ten seconds. Kathleen, vote us out.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
This means adjourned. Thank you very much.
Aye. Yeah, man, I, I leave you nothin'.